The first one is called "See That Babe", and this is arranged by Stacy Gibbs. And these are all selections from our conference. We have, I think, a couple of them. There we go. Thanks for giving me that Noel. I'm going to give you everything. There it is.
See that babe in the lowly manger, he gonna take all my sin away. He gonna reign with my God in glory, one of these days, one of these days. See that babe in the lowly manger, he gonna take all my sin away. And he gonna reign with my God in glory. One of these days. Yes, one of these days. See that babe in the lowly manger, he gonna take all my sin away. And he gonna reign with my God in glory. One of these days. Yes, one of these days. He was born of the virgin Mary. Oh, a little weary. Down holy, holy, son of a man. See that babe in the lowly manger, he gonna take all my sin away. And he gonna reign with my God in glory. One of these days. Yes, one of these days. Was no broom in the inday told him, and they sent him all away. He was wrapped in swaddling poison. He was born in a manger. See that babe, oh see that babe. See that babe, oh see that babe. See that king. See that babe, oh see my lord. Yes, one of these days. See that babe, oh see that babe. See that babe, oh see that babe. See that babe, oh see my lord. Yes, one of these days. One of these days. Yes, one of these days. One of these days. Oh yes, he can reign. One of these days.
I'd like to pledge a phrase called "Ave de la".
Sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, Noel. 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 Sing we all Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing we all Noel, sing we all Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, 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 Noel. Sing we all 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 Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, Noel. Oh, sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, Noel. Oh, come ye people gather here to hear the news of good cheer. The King of Kings, the Lamb of God, is born today in that thou hadst seen. Sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, Noel. Sing Noel, sing Noel, Noel, Noel. Sing Noel, Noel, sing Noel, Noel. Sing Noel!
And I got the picture of Louise. That's all fantastic. I just wanted to make sure. Our next selection is called "Gave Thee", especially a medieval melody that was arranged for our conference.
Gave Thee, gave Thee, gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Christus est natus, gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, 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 Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee. Gave Thee, gave Thee, Christus est natus, ex Maria virgine gave Thee.
Forest Hills Board of Education to order. Mr. Tepper, you can call on us.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here.
Mrs. Hubner?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Heitz.
You join me in the Fledge of Christians, please? The Fledge of Christians.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think everybody pretty much knows where the exits are. We have one here, two here, one back there. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Do we want to move?
Three one.
Go ahead and move ahead with the A's. With the three one.
We're going to three one? It's going to be... Oh, we're going to do the music first.
Let's do the three one first.
Perfect A's is good. It's different than your pronouns.
Let's do the three one first.
Which is the perfect A's?
Perfect A's.
Okay.
Numbers have changed.
Ms. Ryan, if you could present to us the perfect ACT score?
Well, again, I have an honor of commending one of our students at Anderson High School. Is Rebecca Tian here? Rebecca, could you come up? ACT recently commended Rebecca Tian, senior at Anderson High School, for her outstanding performance on the ACT assessment. Rebecca achieved a perfect score of 36. And before I actually recommend to the board, I wanted to also just speak a little bit about Rebecca's score. She secured this perfect score on her first try. She did not expect to get a perfect score going into this, but she felt pretty confident that she scored a 34 or a 35. She attributes the grade to a combination of things, including great support from her parents, who are both here this evening, a combination of her studies over the years, a positive influence from her teachers, and all the way from kindergarten to now, and obviously, the preparation. And I thought I should just mention how she prepared. For the three months prior to the test, Rebecca adhered to a steady ACT prep regime prescribed by her parents. Beginning three months prior to this ACT testing day, Rebecca began taking practice tests. She took one test per week for two months, then one month out, increased to two practice tests per week. So, we know that practice and preparation is very important. So, congratulations. The superintendent is recommending the board commend Rebecca for her achievement and distinction, and that a certificate of commendation be presented to her.
I move that the board commend Rebecca Tian for her achievement and distinction, and that a certificate of commendation be presented to her.
Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
And congratulations to her parents as well.
Yes.
All right, now we get to hear more of the good music, right?
Yes. Sorry for the confusion to begin with. Actually, Rebecca not only scoring a perfect ACT score, but she also asked to rush from here right over to perform. And so, that's why we kind of brought her on a little bit early there. But we do want to bring back our Anderson High School Acapello Chamber Choir to perform just a little bit earlier.
The first question we have, what is called "Joy to the World", which was arranged by our co-director, who is Alex Skerritt. If you've graduated, of course, from this community, you graduated from this community. But then I'm going to show you this special.
Ba da dum, dum dum dum, dum dum dum. Ba da dum, dum dum dum, dum dum dum. Joy to the world, the Lord is come. Let us receive Him. Bam bam bam. Joy to the world, the Lord is come. Let us receive Him. Let me come, prepare me. Heaven and nature sing. Heaven and nature. Ba ba da da ba da, dum ba ba da da ba. Joy to the earth, the Savior reigns. Let them their songs endure. Joy to the earth, the Savior reigns. Let them their songs endure. Papils and thorns, cross hills and plains. We feast on salt and joy. We feast on salt and joy. Ba ba da da ba da, dum ba ba da da ba. The Lord is come. Hallelujah, the Lord is come. Om, let's see, and sorrows grow. The Lord's in the sky. Om, let's see, and sorrows grow. The Lord's in the sky. He comes to make His blessings flow. As the curse is far. As the curse is far. Ba ba da da ba da, dum ba ba da da ba. He rules our world with truth and grace and makes the nations rule. He rules our world with truth and grace and makes the nations rule. The glories of His righteousness and wonders of His love and wonders of His truth. The Lord is come. Hallelujah, the Lord is come. The Lord is come. Hallelujah, the Lord is come. The Lord is come.
Our final special for this event is kind of special to us. It's called "Sing", and it's actually written by the airwaves right here. And she wrote in dedication to Mr. Richard Bus. We premiered it this past November at the Richard Bus Celebration Concert in St. Louis, Detroit, and on the new track. Thank you again for having us. We really appreciate it.
I would come and sing in coffee. And I stand thy worship to song. When I'm gone, I'll still be singing, whether or not you know. And I'll stand by you forever and ever, wherever you may go. Sing, just sing. Sing of me, I sing. These old boys, don't you think that we wait? Songs we sing together. And I'll say, "Oh, my love", in the sigh upon you, are you singing?
This is the entrance of a high school acapello chamber choir in the graduate of this San Francisco. Why would you take a second? And since I would watch your names, trust me. Introduce yourself and your grade.
I'm Emily Hare, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Peter, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Melissa, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Sarah, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Anna, I'm in 12th grade.
I'm Simon, I'm in 13th grade.
I'm Dana Masood, I'm in 11th grade.
I'm Kate Bissinger, I'm in 11th grade.
You're welcome, great, another chance to see you.
I'm just more honest in here.
Another chance, I'm in 12th grade. It's awesome. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
We have minutes?
Policy.
Yeah, policy minister. All right, we're moving on. That was very nice. Next up, our approval for minutes of the Policy Committee meeting from November 15th.
I move that we approve the Policy Committee meeting minutes of November 15th.
Second.
Mr. Tepper? Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Before we move on, could I ask, are the December 3rd one meeting minutes going to be on the next agenda? Because we had the Policy Committee, because we had a meeting in December also. Anybody know?
Yes, Susan's saying yes.
Oh, sorry, Susan. I was looking at him, he's ignoring me. Cammy's ignoring me. I'm like, anybody? Okay, thanks.
All right. Okay, 5.2 approval of minutes of previous regular meeting, November 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Tepper? Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz? Yes. Next up, our correspondence for the Board of Education.
Absolutely, Dr. Heitz. I'd like to begin with, I have a little frame presented to us to the Forest Hill School District from the AP organization and for actually achieving the AP Fourth Annual Honor Roll. We'll have that on display out in the main office. And along with that, I have correspondence from the Heart Department of Education congratulating Forest Hill School District for maintaining or achieving that Fourth Annual AP Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. If I might, there were 477 school districts across the country and Canada that achieved the same award. So think about all the districts, of course, in the United States and in Canada. And we were one of 477 to achieve that award. In regards to maintaining high academic achievements in AP, the number of kids that score three or higher, and the number of classes, and the number of students, all together, we were able to achieve that award for the fourth year. So, I wanted to share that with the Board of Education.
Thank you.
On top of that, I have a couple more pieces of information. At our January 28th board meeting, that's the next regular scheduled board meeting, Dr. Stephen Fagans from Mercy Hospital and Lisa Sweeterman has requested that they present a presentation on concussions. And I thought that's very apropos, that they would share that with the board and to the community of what we're doing in regards to concussions and training, as well as the impact testing. And it's a program that we've talked about as a group, and they'll be sharing that at the next board meeting. And the third piece of correspondence, Rick Ray and I have received correspondence from the Ohio OFCC, Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, in regards to their most recent work that they've done in our district. And we are currently setting up a time to meet in early January with them to give us kind of a synopsis. Online have been their reports, the larger reports that they provided to us in November. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at those as well, but they will be setting up something in early January. Thank you.
Thank you. Any correspondence with the treasurer? Next up, procedures for public commentary. This is a meeting, not a public meeting, but a meeting held in public. We do appreciate any comments or concerns you can bring up during the public commentary section. Just fill out a green card, and we will get to you at that point. Next up is election of a president pro tem for the organizational meeting, which will be held on January 6th at 7:30 in the morning. I move that we elect Dr. Forrest Heitz as president pro tem for the organizational meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tepper? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz? Yes. Thank you. Now's your time for public comments. All right, we're moving right along. District updates from the superintendent.
Yes, Dr. Heitz, I have a number of updates for the board and for our community. I'd like to begin with thanking Phil Sinkovich in regards to, and the entire administrative team in regards to the implementation of the Alice program. We have finished our training of all of our staff and introduced all of our students to the Alice procedures. And I've actually began our drills. So we've completed our first round of drills in December. And we'll be continuing those drills, and they'll be increasing a little bit as we move along, as far as intensity of those drills go. Also, I'd like to, the second item is an update on the ACT. We were fortunate again, and I'd like to thank Diana Carter for the work that she's done in putting this together over the last couple of years and being a testing site for ACT. We had over 333 students tested last Saturday at ACT, of which over 60% were Forest Hill students. So it's kind of that hometown advantage, so to speak. We do that testing at Nagle. So again, I wanted to update the board with that. And we've had five of those in the last two years, and we're continuing, we will continue to be an ACT testing site. The third update to the board is from Fallon Research. Last week, Paul Fallon from Fallon Research and his organization began the survey of our community in regards to questions regarding the district itself, as well as the current perception of our building facilities. He will be providing a synopsis of that report again in January. We'll be meeting with Mr. Fallon and giving that report to the Board of Education. In front of you, item number four, I want to thank Sheila Vilvins for helping... In front of you, item number four, I want to thank Sheila Vilvins for helping revise our brochure. Now, this isn't the glossy copy, but this particular brochure is our Forest Hill School District brochure. This brochure basically shares a lot of the great things that are going on in our district, primarily at the middle and high school. And this actually goes to all middle school students and we have copies available at all of our buildings for anybody who visits our buildings. And, let's see. Just a quick announcement that our annual science fair this year will be on February the first. And although most of our students have probably already registered for the science fair, the registration deadline is December twentieth, this Friday. And last, and I'll probably say this again before the end of the Board meeting, but I'd like to wish the Board and all of our staff and our community happy holidays over this joyous holiday season that is upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I think, oh, we have a Superintendent Professional Development Opportunity.
Let me get to that part of our agenda. The Superintendent request, that's me. I request the Board approve some professional development time. I, through my association, BASSA, was given the opportunity to represent Forest Hills and the United States in a educational visit to the Republic of China. During the time that I will be there, I will be visiting a number of different schools and hopefully bring back some, you know, an update to the Board of Education in regards to the comparison of our districts and the great things that, again, are going on in China, as well as sharing with them the wonderful things that are going on in the Forest Hill School System and in St. Ohio. With that, I think that I'm requesting that the Board approve my professional development in March.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
And?
Go ahead. Go ahead, feel free, no.
For the public, this is done by a scholarship from BASSA. There's no cost to the district. The cost of the trip is covered in full, which includes the travel, meals and lodging. Dr. Jackson's been selected through us because of his heavy involvement with the BASSA, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And that also covered our, the students?
Yes, and we'll get to that later on. We have another great student there.
Great, Alex Stringfellow. All right, very good. Next up is a Board discussion. Do you have any items for Board discussion?
Do we have a work session scheduled yet? I know you sent out, Mrs. Monk sent it out.
It's in your stack.
So we do?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We do have an item in the box there, if you'd like to. In the black box.
In the black box. I have a black box, oh.
That, Dr. Heiss.
There is, we do have one other discussion item.
Black box.
We have a black box warning here that Tracy Hubner has ably and wonderfully served the Board for the last eight years. The, she, my first year on the Board, she was President and I appreciated her mentorship and leadership there. She has been a true asset to our district on many levels, but not least of which reviewing our curriculum and our books. She will be sorely missed as she moves on to building playsets and some, and, and providing for her family. So I just, I want to personally say I appreciate it, and certainly on behalf of the Board.
Appreciate your, your work and we will present you with this fine black box.
Box.
Take it out. Take it out.
Seriously, don't open it. It's crazy. Ooh. Something other than a black box. That's very pretty.
Thank you. Thank you. I know that my daughters were a little sad that we weren't putting out yard signs in November. They wanted mommy's, you know, signs to be out there. I'm like, no, no, that's really okay. But my daughter just turned eight last week and I remember when I campaigned two seasons ago, I was, or two, I guess, yeah, eight years ago, I was eight months pregnant and going door to door and it's crazy that it's already been eight years. But I really enjoyed my time on the Board. I feel like I've gotten to know so many people between Board members, you know, Dr. Jackson and Rick, just the central office staff and the building administrators. Being a former teacher, I think I enjoyed being in a school the most, like when I was able to go in and interact with the staff, so. And then, of course, the students. I'm volunteering in my daughter's school tomorrow, that's what I enjoy the most, so I'll still get to have that interaction, but I really enjoyed my time and I guess I should thank my husband. I think he'll be glad, he'll be glad to have me home a little bit more, but for him supporting me and my parents, so, thanks for the experience, it's been great.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will miss, Mrs. Hubner, I appreciate your straightforward approach to so many difficult decisions we've had to make as a, as a group together. Even keel, very logical in sorting through complex issues. You brought diversity to the Board through age and you've probably, this story's been told before, but I understand, I wasn't there, but I feel like I was, I've heard the story so many times. When you were with a group of people who were, I guess, interviewing with a newspaper and, let's see here, somehow it came up, Forrest Senior was in the group and he'd been on the Board for, I guess, about thirty years at the time, something like that. And I think the comment was made by Mrs. Hubner, "Oh, I wasn't even born then."
It's true, I was there.
Oh, okay.
It happened. It happened.
Been on the Board. Yeah, I'm alive.
But I want to thank you and I, as I said, I respect your opinion and I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
I, you know, it's a strange way to meet somebody, by running. And Tracy and I both ran at the same time. I was, I'd just been appointed and Tracy ran and it was kind of an election where I think we sort of were, in a, in a sense, running against each other because we were both new, but I am so glad we both were on the Board together. I am so fond of you and I'm so glad, I am blessed to know you, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Heiss has got some big shoes to put.
Again, Tracy, just quickly, just to echo, is, thank you for all you've done, I really appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. Great experience.
Moving on to student services. So first up, we have the district calendar. Phil?
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen district calendar as was presented at the Board of Education Public Meeting on October the twenty-eighth. At that time, when we presented the calendar, there have not been any changes except for Board member punctuation. Tracy, again, thank you for all of your help with the calendar and the punctuation and the color coordination, et cetera. She promises she'll continue to help with that in her retirement time, so we'd ask the Board to approve the calendar for fourteen, fifteen school year.
I move that we approve the calendar for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Next up, a residency waiver?
Yes, we'd like to have a motion to approve the residency waiver for Hunter Tidball for the remainder of two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. Hunter is a senior at Turpin High School. His parents have moved out of the district and we would like to obviously have Hunter to continue his Forest Hills education and graduate with his class at Turpin High School. So we'd ask the Board to approve this waiver.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China.
Several overnights.
Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China.
Several overnights. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Just like to point out that that is standard and within policy, so this is nothing that's outside the norm.
And next up is for Alex Stringfellow, an overnight, overnight field trip. I would say so, to China, to Shanghai, China. Yes, as Dr. Jackson shared earlier, he will be traveling to China and we are asking your permission for Alex Stringfellow to go with him in March, March thirteenth to the twenty, to the twenty-second of two thousand fourteen. Alex is from Anderson High School and he'll be attending the Global Student Leader Summit there in China. There is no cost for Alex as well, that's being awarded through a scholarship by BASSA and it covers all of his travel meals and his lodging. So we're requesting or recommending that you approve the overnight trip to Shanghai, China, March thirteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, for Alex Stringfellow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Heiss, if I might, Dr. Heiss, if I might, I'd like to invite Alex up and I have a little something I'd like to share.
Oh, very.
Alex is here. Thank you. It is a great pleasure that I have the opportunity to speak a little bit about Alex, and I actually
with Alex in China, and we will be meeting up in Shanghai for the Economic Global Student Summit, which will be represented from kids from around the world working on global economy. Alex, thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause). I really just want to say a couple of words. It was quite the process to do this, but I feel really strongly about it, and I think it'll be a great opportunity to represent the Forest Hills School District and to bring new ideas back here, both economics and leadership, and really bring some fresh ideas, new ideas, and get a different perspective on the world that I can hopefully share with other people.[312.02][312.02](applause).
Alex, have you ever been to China?
I've not.
There you go. I've actually been to Shanghai. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so you'll love it.
When Alex and I return, we will plan on reporting to the board of our travels and what we have learned.
Great, we look forward to that. Great, next up, item 12, first reading of a board policy matter.
Yes, presented in the board's packet is the first reading of a policy, 5113.01, intra-district open enrollment. Was the former one, and now it's an intra-district transfer policy. We'll speak more about that later on in our policy report. Thank you.
All right. Human Resources Report.
Good evening. For the Human Resources Report this evening, item A, we have a resignation of a study hall monitor at Anderson High School. Item B, a coach resignation. Item C, we see change of salary effective March 1st, 2014, for two of our employees. Salary schedules, item D, these are exhibits for you, and we would ask that you approve these as amended. It's the 2015-16 Other Support Position Salary Schedule and the 1314 Sub-Operational Staff Salary Schedule. Item F would be appointments. We see classified staff here, and I might note that these are being appointed on a probationary basis, based upon the new contract that the board approved last month. This is the first time we're going to use this probationary basis for these four employees. Classified staff. Item G, special services appointments. And you see here a number of items. Going on to page three, it continues with our special services. Item H, on page four, appointment of additional assignment for 1213, and I will say this is a cleanup item that was missed last year somehow. Item I would be coach, consultants, or advisors appointment for 1314 school year. I'll give you just a moment to look at those. Item J, substitute personnel. These are being hired as an as-needed seasonal or intermittent basis. And the FTE statement, since the board meeting last month in November, staffing in the district decreased .66. And furthermore, the calculation adjustments were made based upon a clerical error, and these were both in the Transportation Department. And so we had originally reported a 3.54 FTE change between October and November 2013, and in reality, it was a decrease of 1.92 FTE here. When you look at those reductions due to the clerical error, as well as the reduction for this month, it has been a decrease of 2.58 FTE, which leaves a total FTE of 769.82. And the superintendent does recommend the board approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Visinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Next up, a request advertised for bid. Ray, I like your tie.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes, back in October, we brought some items to forbid projects, and after doing a little bit further investigation, there were two other items we wanted to add to that, one being replacement of a small section of roofing at Anderson High School, another similar-sized piece of roofing over at Turpin High School. So the treasurer recommends the board approve the request to authorize the treasurer to advertise for bids for the two stated projects.
All right.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Visinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Thank you, Ray. Next up, treasurer, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund.
The High School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund is, allows us to make legal calls to get some of the basic answers to school questions that are out there without calling our school attorney for ones that we believe are more general in nature, and they've been a good resource. So it's recommended the board adopt the resolution to join the High School Board Association Legal Assistance Fund for 2014, and direct the treasurer to pay the legal assistance fund fee of $250.
I move that we adopt the resolution to participate in the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund for 2014.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to strongly recommend we support this. It's a great deal. I don't know how often you guys use it, but I know I have made calls to them before also. But having said that, I must abstain because I am a trustee on the board that oversees that group, so I'm not, ethically, I'm not allowed to vote for it.
Dr. Tepper?
Mrs. Visinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Next up, treasurer's report.
Yeah, item 15.2, our first items list are donations, almost $27,000, and one that I sent out to the board. A special note, a large donation from the Wayne E. Williams Trust, a former Anderson High School German teacher left a sizable donation for student travel. This is the bulk of it, there'll be another piece that comes in a little bit later. But like I said, this gentleman was very giving and obviously touched a lot of people. I saw Andy Wolf, spoke of him this week, and told him about this large donation. We were just talking, and he said that he is the reason he became a teacher, so it's pretty cool, because Andy's one of the best, so.
He was an interesting guy, him as a teacher, and it was Air Williams. Anyway.
Okay, item B, statement of board accounts, all accounts in a positive order, with the exception of one, that we're actually waiting for some promised funds, Fund 587, but we've met the criteria for that. Item C lists our general fund receipts, 47.63 of our projections. Right now, we're a little bit behind on collections, and the next month or two, I'll be updating the five-year forecast to reflect that. Not significant, but we're a little behind on those collections. And on D and E lists our expenditures to date. All of those are in line with historical data, so no issues to report there. Item F, our bank reconciliation. G, our list of investments. H, our amendments to appropriation. We have two funds that are making overall increases, two, nothing in the general fund. Item I, we're asking the board to approve the payment of board, Board of Education meeting and seminar expenses that are listed. And one note, as required, and advertise the tax budget on display now, it'll be on display through the organizational meeting. The foundation of that is the forecast, as well as the things that the board has already seen and approved up till now, but we're asking the board to approve the 1415 tax budget at that meeting. It's recommended the board approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Move that we approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Visinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes. Now, up to reports to the Board of Education, starting with the Business Advisory Committee Report.
Just a quick report there. We had our last meeting on December the 9th, had a few members, so I think we're up to 12 or 13 now, and had a couple of guests that both De Stone and Randy Smith asked to come and just to listen to the discussion, not knowing what it was, but we had some good discussion, as always. But the two topics were our planned publication that the board, that we're putting together to communicate more to the entire community with the publication, so we talked in depth about that and some of the strategies, and I've shared those internally, as well as district facilities, just some of their thoughts. Like I said, it's a diverse group and a caring group, and so, like I said, I continue to be, continue to learn from them a lot. And as I said, it's a group that, we don't really come to resolutions, but we tackle topics and try to, try to, you know, kind of look at all different angles, not trying to get a consensus, not trying to get a recommendation, but just trying to understand so that we can be a better resource, for them to me, and then me to obviously the board and to the administrative team.
I appreciate the opportunity to sit in. I gained from that experience, there's diversity of thought in that group, and quite a wide spectrum, but they're very candid about it, but all, you know, very positive about trying to get their point across. And I just appreciate the fact that they invest their time to share, and like I said, I got something out of it. Part of the discussion was on facilities, and they had some very candid, you know, pointed thoughts about that, but I think it was all good discussion.
I think along the brochure topic, I'm going to try and get, over in Northern Kentucky, Highlands has a quarterly brochure that they mail out that I happened to see at one of my partner's desks, and I grabbed it, I haven't brought it here yet, but I'll try and get everyone a copy. It was, I mean, obviously, they've been doing it for a while. It was a little more comprehensive than, I think, like the In Touch or the Anderson Park District Insights, yeah, so. Next up, the Forest Hills Foundation Report.
Thank you. The Forest Hills Foundation for Education met last Wednesday, December 11th. There was a report from the Community Outreach Team. They've met recently with Mercy, Wellington, and Total Quality Logistics, and are looking at further partnerships and support from those organizations. It looks promising. The next event is going to be a Day for Today's Women on February 22nd. It'll be at Nagel from 9:00 to 2:00, right? I'm looking back at De Stone, he's shaking, yes, so I got that one right. We also heard from the Program Initiative Team. They recently had another ACT prep session. There were about 40 students that were served through that, all supported by the foundation. They're looking at another, I think, an SAT session sometime in January. There'll be yet another ACT prep session in, I think, March for the April exam, and there's some discussion of trying to put a program together for the eighth and ninth grade, parents mostly, so they can get a better understanding of what these tests are all about and how their kids can start preparing for it. Maybe what they can do is they can take a practice exam once a week for three months before they get a perfect score. We've seen that happen before.
That's before.
We also heard from the Alumni Engagement Team. The alumni basketball game will be on March 1st this year. That's going to be at Anderson High School. The alumni golf outing is in the planning stages, they're looking to try to expand that. And there is a, I think, the second of the alumni newsletter going out this week? This week, yes. There's also, they're continuing to pursue the annual fund before end of year, would be a wonderful time to contribute to the foundation. My check did go in the mail today, you should receive that tomorrow or thereabouts. And that's all we've got, the foundation.
Thank you. Next up, the Legislative Liaison Report.
I've got a written report that's at your place, a number of bills that are in committee. I wanted to highlight three of them. If you've got the report, it says Legislative Liaison Report, December 16th. The first one is legislation that would allow school districts to excuse students to participate in a school-sponsored athletic club. Quite frankly, that's something that we've already dealt with, and so we're already covered, and that bill will not impact us. The second one that I wanted to comment on was House Bill 193. That's legislation that would revise high school diploma requirements, and this is one where the Forest Hills School District requirements already exceed the state standards and will exceed what the new state standards are, so that alone will have little impact on Forest Hills. Dr. Jackson, was there something else that we needed to bring up as far as the testing?
Well, in regards to, there was about 20 new additions and changes made to that bill in committee. Came out of committee, passing both Republican and the Democrat section of the committee, and will go back to the House now, I believe, no, to the Senate for vote. But I think it's just a moving target. When you look at all this going on in our legislature today regarding the new state report card of the districts, regarding the assessments, and those types of things, a couple of the amendments to this particular piece of legislation is going to postpone the changing of the Ohio graduation test to the assessments for another year. They're not quite ready to get that up and going like they thought they would be. Also, in legislation, it said that the new Ohio assessments that will be online here next year were going to be taken by our students through the use of technology. I believe that they are realizing that that's quite an undertaking across the state, and so they postponed that particular piece for another year, and the list will go on. So, you know, it's one of those ready, set, aim, and then it changes quite often, so we just try to keep up with what we know.
I attended a session at Capitol Conference where both the Chair of the House Education Committee and Chair of the Senate Education Committee presented and then took questions at the end, and they took quite a pummeling over some of the overlapping of tests, which I guess will be corrected by this. I mean, there's a lot going on and a lot of change in education at the state level, and hopefully, this bill and some of these others will correct some of the things that were put in place with the last budget bill. The third bill I wanted to mention was the top of the second page, Senate Bill 229. That is a bill that will add some flexibility to the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System to give schools a little bit more flexibility in the evaluation system. And I looked at that, and that looked like a positive thing also. Anytime you've got more flexibility, that's usually a good thing. So there are about 10 or 11 of them here. If you've got interest in any of the others, you can catch me offline, and we can discuss it. But that's my report for Legislative Liaison.
All right, thank you. Next up, Policy Committee Report.
Okay.
Oh, it's your chance. You missed it earlier.
This is the good part.
Yeah, this is the good part.
Dallas and Randy and I are all going to talk to you a little bit about this, actually a lot about it, because it's probably the most significant policy we've addressed since we've been a formal committee. I wish there were more people here tonight, but hopefully, people will watch at home on TV, so, and hopefully, the word will get spread. So I'll give you a little bit of history, and then we'll talk to you about the actual terms of the policy. Forest Hills has been extremely liberal in the past in permitting transfer from one school to another, and there are very few guidelines on management as our policy currently exists. Our policy, as it currently exists, is actually called intra-district open enrollment, and it says, "The board shall permit any eligible student in the district to apply for enrollment in any district program or school, provided the student's application meets the requirements of the state and the conditions established in district guidelines." And again, there's not a lot of guidance in the guidelines, so it's pretty wide open, and students can pretty much go to any school they want for any reason, it seems. So the current restrictions are primarily capacity issues in a building or a grade level, or a student has a history of suspension or expulsion, or a racial imbalance. And frankly, what has happened is the numbers have gotten away from us, and we have some buildings that can't accommodate any more students, and some programs that have reached or exceeded capacity. So for us, as a district, the issue came to a head when we considered, or when we are considering, our next year's freshman class, because it's a very big class. And we've had a lot of movement in the last couple to few years, transfer-wise. So last spring, we began in earnest to take a look at this policy. I think Tammy and I had some informal meetings. Randy, I think, attended a couple PTA meetings, and we sort of informally started to talk with parents and administrators and among ourselves, and Tammy, Dallas, Randy, and I began in earnest, and Rick also, on the Policy Committee, to take charge of the issue this fall. And for capacity purposes, we do have numbers attached to this policy now, and just so you know where we got them for high school, the numbers for capacity come from the OFCC report that we recently received, and currently, Turpin actually exceeds capacity, so that's very important for you all to know. And for elementaries, the capacity comes from class size or program capacity, because it's more appropriate for self-contained or team classrooms to use that measure. So, since some of our buildings in the district have little or no ability to accommodate intra-district transfers, other than those that might be required for special needs or otherwise required by law, the Policy Committee, consisting of Superintendent Dallas Jackson, HR Director Tammy Carnahan, Treasurer Rick Tepper, and Board Members Randy Smith and myself, have met on November the 15th and December the 3rd, and we are recommending the policy that the board has in front of it today, and Randy will tell you about the recommendations.
Yeah, we've spent, quite frankly, quite a good amount of time going through this. I think the two board meetings alone, excuse me, Policy Committee meetings alone were about five and a half hours. So we did look at this from a lot of different angles and tried to think about it from the perspective of a lot of different constituents. What we're recommending is, one, we renamed the policy to more accurately communicate the purpose of the policy. It will be called the intra-district transfer policy. Using the terms "open enrollment" implies something that isn't really, I think it's misleading. We'll revise the policy and guidelines to more clearly indicate the circumstances when an intra-district transfer may be approved. I emphasize the word "may" because there will be an application process for this, and we do have criteria in the guidelines that give the superintendent specific guidance on what is appropriate, what isn't, with the superintendent always having the prerogative of making certain exceptions. The third thing is we'll indicate clear boundaries for each school. Right now, there may be some confusion about what the boundaries are for each school, especially the elementaries. The so-called pick or swing streets will be eliminated. Every street will have an assigned building. This will eliminate unanticipated fluctuation in enrollment, and also eliminate duplicate bus coverage that we now have on the swing streets. The fourth item is to establish and, quite frankly, publicize the capacity for the various buildings. As Julie pointed out, all of our buildings, the enrollment currently exceeds the OFCC-stated capacity, with the exception of Anderson, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was fairly close. It was getting very near the OFCC number. So that, we had to do something this year because the capacity just doesn't exist, and so that was part of the rationale for stepping up and clarifying and, quite frankly, tightening our intra-district enrollment policy. And the last thing was to establish and publicize a clear application process and deadlines for intra-district transfers. We hope that the benefits coming out of this will be to minimize confusion and misunderstanding about the intra-district transfer policy. I've spoken with various people who were going through a lot of stress in Nagel because they thought that they had to make a decision on which high school to go to, and that's actually really not the case, other than some very, very limited situations. We hope this will provide clear explanations for intra-district transfers, for the approval or disapproval, and so that parents will understand that. The third benefit is hopefully eliminate overcrowding as a result of unnecessary or unexpected or unanticipated intra-district transfers, and as I said earlier, eliminate double bus coverage on some of the swing streets. The revised policy, and I think we also have the guidelines, are there for everybody to take a look at. This is a first reading. We'll have a month to digest this, take any input. Dr. Jackson, you shared our final policy and guidelines with your staff, is that correct?
That's correct.
You got input, so the one we're looking at incorporated comments and a few changes that you received from the staff.
That is correct.
So again, if you have, no action tonight, but if you've got questions or comments, any one of us on the committee would be happy to address or try and answer a question.
Dr. Jackson, is there anything you want to say?
I would just like to say, I'd like to thank Randy and Julie and Tammy and Rick, of course, for the hard work that they did in this. This was, it did take a lot of time and a lot of thought and a lot of effort. Also, in the guidelines, we want to make it perfectly clear that our goal is to, if you are already currently enrolled in one of our buildings, we're not going to ask you to go back. to go back, you know, unless, no, not really, that won't happen unless the capacity gets so far, we'd have to do something. But right now, we're not planning on doing that at all. We are also looking ahead in regards to, our intent is also not to split families at this point. If you're already currently open enrolled and you have a sibling who is coming up and will be in the same building concurrently as the other sibling, then our goal is to make sure that, make sure that that continues as well. So, I think we've given a lot of thought to the situations. I'm sure there'll be a couple of things that'll come up that, that we haven't quite, you know, addressed that we are aware of right now, but I think we've done a pretty good job.
You know, I want to also thank Tammy personally for all of us, because, you know, she was really the architect of the drafts, and she looked at a number of other districts, I think most of, with two high schools, and gathered policies, and talked to a lot of people, and had a lot of discussions, and did a great job. So, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
I have a question. When and how can parents learn more? I mean, I know the specific guidelines actually have dates for submitting and stuff like that.
As soon as we pass it, it's going to go on?
So, after the January board meeting, it will go?
Yeah.
Maybe make a poll for them to see.
Yeah. I think you said that that did, if we get it passed in January, that still gave you enough time to get it out and be on the timetable that was set up in the current guideline. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Because I know, especially like the pick streets, you know, I happen to be in one of those neighborhoods, and I'm glad that my kid will be assigned to school, and they're not going to have that stress, especially a picking one. But I know a lot of neighbors talking about it currently, like where their kid's going to go, and want to make sure they have enough time to know they're assigned for this.
How is that determined, as far as swing streets?
Because, what, three neighborhoods?
Actually, yes, so three different neighborhoods, but Dr. Heis and board, as we came to find out, those neighborhoods had already been assigned a specific attendance area for schools. So, we're not, we're just going back.
Why does the bus go for both?
Excuse me?
Why does the bus go?
Well, because they had the, we also, the board at the time, gave the opportunity for those people that are on that street to choose or pick another district. In other words, they, we have already, they had already been assigned to a particular school.
Historically, aren't those all Sherwood neighborhoods? Because, yeah, mine, and I'm a pick neighborhood, too.
And then there's one other, yeah.
Yeah. And we're both Sherwood, so it must have been Sherwood, because Sherwood is the only, was the only school that really kind of traditionally split. I mean, if you go to Mercer, you typically go to Turpin, and Sherwood split, so I think that's how it happened.
But those streets were actually always had been determined as Anderson attendance areas.
Yeah.
But at the time, and I wasn't hearing, to make those decisions, but many years ago at the time, whether it was the development that was occurring at the time, or whatever that might have been, it gave the opportunity for some of those people that lived on those particular streets to choose. But they were always, they were already had been defined as specific attendance areas, both elementary and high school.
And how is that deter, is that, you feel, like for these new developments that are going at them, we have, there's one off of Clough there, which is whatever, south of Clough, off of Brunns, and then, of course, the thousand-unit Coldstream Complex.
That was the enrollment committee.
Okay. Was that?
The yet-to-be-created.
The yet-to-be-created enrollment, okay. I mean, that's, so that's.
We look at what that particular development, where that particular development, currently where those students would go, and that's what we've done with the new development over in the Wilson area.
The one on, it's between, it's almost equidistant between Summit, Sherwood, and Wilson, and I, you know, I just put the other one on Coldstream.
Right, that'll be, that'll be yet to come.
That would be interesting.
The larger.
Well, I think that's been delayed somewhat. Not that it's squashed, but I think it's been delayed, or I don't think they're going to move forward with the current plan, because that, we'd almost have to build another elementary for that one. I mean, at the very original plan they had, it was a lot of units.
Are we, Rick, I don't think Rick and I are apprised to any specific changes. We know that there's still being discussion going on, and whether they're looking at phasing it in or what.
I mean, they said, I mean, we're five years out, at least, so I think that's, that's all we need to hear. We have lots of other things to.
Although, that's, I mean, that's, that's the last big area, I guess, in Anderson Township to do.
Is there anything else on this policy? Anybody? Tammy, Rick, Dallas?
No, I believe that you guys did a great job in doing that. And again, very cognizant, as I said, we're very cognizant of the, of the specific families that could be affected, and we'll work with them, as I said, as long as there's a sibling that's in that particular building, or whatever that building is concurrently, then we'll try to make it happen for their siblings.
I did want to comment that this is, this is a good example of the work that was done on this committee, as to why I believe board committees are very useful and efficient. Board committee allows a smaller group of people to go in-depth and develop or use expertise in a certain area, and so that we can bring back recommendation and hopefully do the heavy lifting, so that the rest of the board can, can benefit from that. Again, we.
It was a great, it was a great, it was a great experience. I think Tammy maybe not thinks so, but, but it was a good, healthy, it was a good, healthy experience. We had a good time.
And be prepared for a whole new group of houses from Neola coming probably here.
Yeah, well.
And we'll be working on as well.
A lot of those are, actually, most of those are routine, and it's not quite as heavy.
Thank you, guys, for being on.
Next up, the Saga Report. I think that was also.
Yeah, you've got a written report in front of you. Take a pardon?
You had a busy month?
Yeah, I know. Attended, on behalf of the board, we've rotated around, so that each board member gets an opportunity to participate. Attended the Saga meeting on December 10th. Attendance actually was low that day due to snow. I believe that was a snow day for the school district. They covered three issues. One of them was a report by Officer Getke on just the status and update of activity within the Forest Hills School District. He pointed out that there was an arrest, substance arrest at McDonald's, although the good news, well, there's no good news, but it was not a Forest Hills School District student. But apparently, it got a lot of attention and further served as an example and a reason for students not to be in a situation that might even look like they were going to be distributing substances. The second thing that was pointed out was a middle school youth summit, which took place November 19th, with 77th and 8th grade students participating, and 30 community members and parent volunteers. Apparently, most of the work took place in small groups. Apparently, this, this has been very successful, and if anybody wants to comment on the outcome, they spoke very highly of it, and apparently, it works, and they're going to continue doing that. The third report was from Jasmine Rishi, Mercy Health Partners. She gave a brief report on activity that Mercy Health Partners has done, and mentioned a number of programs that are operating in the greater Cincinnati area. It was very interesting to sit through that and to see all the work that those people do. Very little credit, very little thanks, but it's really important work, and sometimes, I, I know, I don't think about it as much, when I talk to people in other school districts and realize the problems they face. Not that we don't have those problems in Forest Hills, but we don't have them to quite the same magnitude as some other areas of the greater Cincinnati area or the state of Ohio. And so, I became more appreciative of the work that they're doing. And I guess everybody else has already attended. I'm probably the last one to go this year, but they do good work and deserve to be thanked for the thankless work that they're doing.
Mr. President, I only have scheduled through 2013, so you guys need, if you want to continue this for 2014, which you're going to pick among to attend, so just to let you know, I only did through December.
I think Mr. Hemelgar probably could handle that.
Or you could take over that job. Can you get that scheduled?
Yeah, exactly, yes. Before he has a vote, I think we could put it to a vote. Next up is the Tax and Center of Review Council Report. I attended that on December 5th with a whole cadre of my colleagues, Ray, Rick, and Dallas. The, Rick was elected Vice Chairman of the Council, which I gather is quite a position of honor that he's had for years. It was, we had our, we talked about the TIF funds, there are some, obviously, some improvements going on down by the, down by the river that are ongoing. We talked about the, kind of, there'll be a lot of changes, I think, over the next five to 10 years, as some of these TIF funds expire and are renewed. I was, there was a lot of talk about what improvement in township or county roads that the township can provide by using these, these funds. And there was a lot of talk of collaboration with the district and with the Park District, which was, or with the school district, as well as the Park District, which I found very refreshing. The, there did seem to be a difference. I've gone to these meetings over the past couple of years, and there was a little difference in the, kind of, the attitude and the collegiality there. So, I think that's a very positive improvement as we go forward, among the, among all the these, what I see is three, the three major groups of Anderson Township, being the trustees, the Park District, and of course, the school district. So, it was, it was a good meeting, and we will continue to be working toward some more collaboration. I don't believe we have an executive session tonight. I do want to thank everybody. This is the last meeting of the year. We've had a, I think, a very, very good year. I do want to take a moment to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I do appreciate everyone here. I know, I think there's a lot of Christmas concerts and things going on tonight, but I appreciate everyone for coming. Appreciate all the work that you do and have done over the year. Obviously, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but we have a great, great group of people that, to work on them and overcome, and everything that comes in our way. So, appreciate everything, appreciate you coming. Our next meeting, our next is an organizational meeting at 7:30 a.m. I eagerly look forward to everyone being there. And then, our, tentatively, we do actually decide that at the organizational meeting, the next board meeting will be January 27th.
28.
28.
Is it 27, 28, Tuesday?
Yeah, so January 27th, unless we decide to start doing these on Tuesdays, which would be good for the softball schedule. That's a whole nother. So, anyway, thank you again for coming, and, and have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepfer?
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Yes, yes.
Aye, aye.